Today is Wednesday, May 22, 2024. Can I get a roll call, please?
Sure. Sharon Callahan is absent. Lou Conier?
Here.
Charlie Obermeyer?
Here.
Pepper Painter?
Here.
And Barb Jaeger?
Here.
All persons are reminded that this session is being recorded on tape as required by law for the preservation of records and are asked, when providing comment, to give their name and address. All persons in attendance are requested to print their name, address, and affiliation on the sign-in sheet at the back. Tonight's hearing is a discussion of the concept site plan for Wash X 2305 Hanover Pike.
So you may recall last month, the concept plan for Wash X, you can go to that mic, actually, and was introduced. And so we had some questions there. They have not received our comments yet. We, no, they have received our comments, along with many others, and they're actually in your pack tonight, all the comment letters. So this is just an opportunity for anyone in the public to ask any questions or have any comments to be heard. So do we have any questions or comments? Okay. How about up here? Anything from the commission?
I think the only thing was, we saw that you sent our request for a sound study. Is that something that's recommended, or is that part of the Carroll County?
No, that won't be something that's looked at.
The Carroll County, okay.
So if you want, we can go through and just take care of all the car, the Wash X stuff right now. Down in the regular meeting, we had a discussion of a concept site plan for Wash X. We want, though, that is basically that it's just an adequate facility study. So if you would like, we can just do that now and just get the Wash X out of there.
So since there was no comment on the public hearing, do we close this and then go to the regular meeting?
Sure, we can do that, and then we'll just bring this right back up and get it over.
Okay, okay. So if there's no public comment on the public hearing for discussion of the concept site plan for Wash X at 2305 Hanover Pike, do I make a motion to close for this?
Yep.
Need a motion?
移到 Second.
Okay, so pass. Okay, next up is the regular meeting of the Hampstead Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, May 22, 2024. We've already done the roll call. Same reminder, all persons are reminded that this session is being recorded on tape as required by law for the preservation of records and are asked, when providing comment, to give their name and address. All persons in attendance are requested to print their name, address, and affiliation on the sign-in sheet. Okay, so Jim, you wanted to roll into the concept plan discussion?
If you want, we can do the minutes approval, and then the zoning minister update, then we'll go right back into the concept plan for Wash X.
Great.
Minutes.
Okay, yep. Minutes were submitted. Can I get a motion to approve, or any comment?
Motion to approve.
I second it. So moved.
Uh huh.
Next up on the agenda, Jim, would be the zoning administrator update.
Okay. Just a few things to get you guys up to date this month. So the water system modernization and centralization project, we talked about this a couple months ago. The design phase for the site plans for the water system project is well underway. The engineers hope to submit the concept plan to Carroll County and the town in time to be included on the June agenda. Antietam Broadband, probably seen them around town. I know they did your neighborhood little, over your way now, Charlie. And our, Antietam Broadband is finishing up installing underground fiber lines in the Oakmont Green and Oakmont Overlook Developments. They're also currently working in North Carroll Farms, and then move on to Northside Estates and the small crossing neighborhoods next. Antietam is projecting to be able to provide service to homes in the fall. Waste gas and go. They had a board of zoning appeals hearing that was scheduled for May 2. It had to be postponed due to an illness in one of the families of a board member. It's been rescheduled for June 12. They're seeking the board's approval for condition used to operate a gas station in the general business district. This afternoon, we actually received the sets of plans, the final plans for the Hans Meat Project. So the commission approved the Hans concept plan last February, and since we got those plans today, I expect the Hans team will be in attendance next month to introduce the final plan to this commission. And then finally, everyone's probably seen it, Hampstead Volunteer Fire Department, their new station's almost on, so I just want to make everybody aware that the dedication ceremony for the new fire station will be held on June 1 at 10:00 a.m., and it's got an open house to follow, open to the public. So once the dedication's done, you can go in, check it out. It's very state-of-the-art, it's very impressive, so.
I never believed they could do in that short amount of time. It looks wonderful, it's done, almost done.
They did, and so once that is, they have everything in there, and they're up and running out of the new station, then they begin phase three, which is changing the temporary station in the rear of the lot into the social hall. And I think they anticipate that being finished hopefully by the end of the year. And that'll be a great addition, and it should be able to raise them some funds. I think that it will be able to accommodate 300 people easily in the building, so something to answer.
Are they doing the festival on their grounds this year, or is it still going to be over at Pantherplex?
The carnival?
Yeah, carnival.
Carnival will be still at Pantherplex. Yep. That's it.
Okay.
Now we can go back to Wash X.
Thank you, Jim, yep. So we'll go to the, next up on the agenda, discussion of concept site plan, Wash X 2305 Hanover Pike.
We just talked about this. So one of the things that is required with any plan review is an adequate facility study done by the town, and we look at different areas that it could, the project could impact and just give a report on it. So the proposed use of this property is conditional use in the general business district of Hampstead. Wash X received approval of the conditional use from the Board of Zoning Appeals on January 18, 2024, to operate a car wash on the property at 2305 Hanover Pike. The project concept plan as presented meets the zoning requirements as defined under Chapter 135 of the Town Code. The concept site plan complies with all the applicable provisions of the code of the Town of Hampstead and all other applicable state and county codes and provisions. Some of the things, the commission considerations are, please review, or please, yes, please review the review comments made by the state, the county, and the town agencies, which we provide to you, gives you their notes and their thoughts on their, on the site plan. I can let you know that local schools, of course, since this is a car wash, will not be impacted by the project. The proposed use will not create an inadequacy in police protection, recreational services, sewer service, or roads. The proposed use will not create an inadequacy in fire protection and emergency services. The amount of town water used, which is based on an estimate of 90 gallons per day, which was provided to us in the last several weeks from the credit board team, the engineers, basically, that's three persons working two shifts, so a total of six people a day using basically bathroom service and kitchenette services. And that's provided by the state of Maryland, those numbers. Will not create an adequacy in water or sewer services. The project conforms to the Town of Hampstead Environment Comprehensive Plan and the Carroll County Water and Sewer Master Plan. And to the best of our knowledge, the proposed use does not violate the provisions of any enforceable deed, restrictions of covenants attached to this property. So this information is submitted to this commission for your consideration during deliberations for approval of the concept site plan. This information is accurate to the best of our knowledge. So that's that. Looking over the comments, you will see that the traffic study has been required by the Carroll County Department of Engineering. So I know that you guys are underway, working with the traffic control team that's doing it. So do you have any idea on the timeline for that?
Seth Orsini, Frederick Porter Associates, 57th Avenue Street. I believe they just started working on it, so I'd hope to get it in the next couple days.
Okay, yeah. They, they go out and they study the traffic, the flows, the amounts of vehicles at certain times during the day and on weekends, normally peak hours, and then to see what they project that this project will add to the traffic. Couple other things that you'll see in there, there's questions about the rear entrance, which is an existing entrance, but passes through the library property before connecting with Eagle Ridge, so they'll have to, I guess, answer some questions about that. And then the other thing, which I thought was a good recommendation, was additional landscape screening along Route 30. So when they're, basically, people are sitting there buying their tokens or checking in, those headlights aren't shining right out into 30. And then there was also comments about some additional landscape screening on the rear of the property facing the library.
I was just over there a few minutes ago, and there's bushes that are already there between the drive aisle and Route 30.
Okay.
Kind of already do that, so we might be able to use those, or if they're not quite tall enough, we might be able to rip those out and put something a little bit taller.
Okay, great.
I'm sorry, I missed your name and who you are when you first started.
Seth Orsini, Frederick Porter Associates.
Okay, so you're the engineer for the, not representative of the car wash?
Right.
Okay, okay, got it, yep.
Barbara, you had a question that you sent out via email to us. Did you get your question answered about the water usage in the well?
Yeah, I think Jim kind of.
You did, okay.
Yeah, I mean, basically, I think I have it correctly, and please let me know if I'm wrong, that basically, so you're going to reclaim rainwater, you're going to have a big tank to store it in. When they do a car wash, basically, the water that they use, 85% of that, is then recycled and goes back into the car wash process. There is a connection to the town water service system, but that's only going to go to one part of the building where the, basically, the restrooms and the area, like the, where guys would hang out, a little kitchenette, that's it. The water will not connect at all to the car wash process. So they have applied for a well, basically, as a backup. So in a case of a drought, and there's no rainwater, and their, their recycled rain slash rainwater is, is running low, they have a backup plan to keep being able to wash.
So that 15% is meant to be tapped off, topped off on a regular basis by rain?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Is that all right? Anything you like that?
That's it.
Jim, you nailed it.
There'll probably be a tank that's inside the building, so it'll be pumped from the underground, tanks that are getting the stormwater outside, pumped inside to a tank, and then if that, there'll be a float switch in there, if it hits a certain point, then it'll kick to the well and then hop it off from there.
Okay.
I still ask, what if it doesn't rain for three months? How do you open the car wash? But I guess at that point, you make better use of the well in the beginning, so.
We can look and see what the weather's going to look like for the next week or two, and if it seems like we're going to need to start to kick on the well, to start filling out the tank that's inside the building, we'll do that.
No, I was saying, like, for opening, like, grand opening day, suppose, I mean, you would have to have water from somewhere at that point, too, so.
Hopefully, we'll kick on the well before then.
Right, okay.
And I'm assuming you, there will be a period where you, you've got the, the collection system operational before you open.
That's, yeah.
So we'll be collecting for a while before they.
Ideally, that's my point.
Yes.
Okay.
Go out and do rain dances. Anybody else?
My questions were around the things you listed, I, it's not in the packet, but there was an email that had all those bullets, and those are not reflected in this, this current plan, right? Like, some of those, I mean, it looks like they're in here now, these evergreen trees between the library and there, and you said there's bushes there, I didn't notice last time I drove by, but this is, 3, March 6 was the date on this, so is that, is this potentially going to change the next time we see it with some of those comments around trees and shrubs and stuff?
We were waiting to get all the comments for concept, then address them all at once instead of kind of chasing our tails on.
That makes sense, okay.
Yeah, so what they have here, nothing's been addressed, this is the same as what was introduced.
Just the title sheet, I updated the, the water usage for that one.
Okay.
Right, this is not up for approval, it's just.
No, this is just a public.
Sharing some information.
The traffic study information will come back to us again, once that's done?
Correct, correct.
Yeah, I missed the discussion last month, and I do wonder about 30 there, because I know car washes in the summertime, you know, a nice day, can have a lot of traffic going through, and that's, you don't want to be blocking 30, because it's already crazy enough at that intersection, so.
Yeah, I guess just one last question for me, is when you were talking about the, the system, right, to fill up the water, to wash, recycle, because I guess that include, that recycling includes doing whatever sort of filtering of chemicals or anything else that might come through there? Is that the case? Is there any, like, waste from the recycle process itself that we need to be concerned about?
The goal is to reuse as much as possible, and then we have an internal filtering system, so it has to be treated before we use it again for the new cars.
Okay.
And then the reason why it's not 100% is because there's evaporation, it's going to go off in truck beds, things like that.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess what I was thinking, and maybe you did just mention it there, but you said the treatment of, right, there's some, you know, amount of chemi, the filtering, but the filtering process itself, it isn't a known net waste, right? There's any sort of specific type of waste that needs to be considered for?
You're talking about, like, stormwater runoff as opposed to rain, or?
I mean, if you're filtering something, right, a filter is going to extract things out, right? Whatever is extracted would be that kind of a waste. Is there anything that has to be taken into consideration, like, dumping it has to be considered, or is it all 100% net contained system?
There's nothing that we need to take precaution on specifically that I know of, but we'd look into that.
Okay. I've got, just not familiar with how a recycling car wash operates.
Like, they have many out there, like, already up and running, so I imagine these, you know.
And I'm assuming, you know, there will be a little bit that will go into the sewer system, not in the stormwater.
Right.
But into the sewer system.
Yeah. Okay. Any more comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up on the agenda is the approval of a zoning certificate, the Hampstead Grain Mill at 4041 Gill Avenue.
Dan Cook, and I live at 790 Main Bridge, Manhattan, representing the mill. So we did some samples, and I assume everybody got a chance to take a look.
You guys went above and beyond. That was a great way to do that.
I really appreciate that, I was like, I thought you were going to do, like, one little square sample, but you did the whole section.
So did I.
You're like, whenever you do your own room.
Too small, and then next thing you know, they're rolling up and down the wall.
So, okay, well, no.
I think I want those guys to come to my house and give me a sample.
We do appreciate you being, you know, accepting of that comment, but that's great. But yeah, we all saw it, I didn't drove, I didn't drive by in person, but saw the drawings.
The pictures are impressive.
Yeah.
Do you want to just start running with opinions?
I'm sorry?
I said, do we want to start the running with the opinions?
Sure.
My personal opinion is I still kind of like the original proposed colors myself, and then I really didn't care as much for the black and the white, personally, but I'm, whatever, I'll make you sit here.
Good, Barb, go for it.
Okay.
Yeah, you go first.
I agree with you on the black and the white, because I think it's entirely too modern for the, the area around there. I looked at it from both sides, I looked on the wall you painted, and then I drove from the train station side and tried to picture those same colors with the train station in front of it. I think the colors that mimic the train station, I think there'd be too much going on with that, because it's going to look like they're all part of the same thing, and they're not, they're two totally separate things. You want something that complements, but doesn't assume the identity of the train station. So that being said, the dark gray with the lighter gray trim, I think was my preference, and the other reason I liked that is, I think the silos that you brought before us a while back had a color that would complement that gray.
The same exact colors.
Okay, maybe you could do, like, a couple of shades lighter, so then it would kind of, just a thought. But that's, that's my opinion, but, that's my daughter's opinion, too, but she's not on this board, so.
Sounds good.
Okay, so we have one blue and gray?
Well, I didn't realize you were asking us to pick, but.
That's why it has a dark blue.
You know, again, I, I, yeah, the black and the white one, yeah, didn't care for it at all, so I guess you're kind of unanimous so far. Just standing alone, I didn't do as thorough a job as Barb did, and actually drive by and see how it looked, but, you know, just by looking at the colors, I did like the train station colors as a standalone, but again, I could be easily convinced Barb's much better at this than, than I am. And at the end of the day, it's not a requirement of the Planning and Zoning Commission, you're just doing this out of favor to us, right? Yeah?
It's, yeah, ultimately, it's there.
As long as, right, so, yeah.
So I'm with the gray and blue team, whatever.
Yeah, gray, blue.
Sharon, who is not here, had expressed gray and red, like the train station, so, you know, Charlie?
Charles? Yeah, I like, I was hoping the, the red for the train station would look, but I think it's just going to be too much all over that building, and I know last month, didn't we talk about, like, some accents around, or like, part of that, that elevator stack, or whatever that, that big block is right in the middle? We talked about doing that a different color, but looking at these drawings now with this color, I think this is really, it's really sharp, and it's not going to stick out like a sore thumb. I think the red and the, is just, like, way up is just going to look, you'll notice it from, you know, Westminster. Yeah, yeah, so I'm, I'm with the blue and the gray, dark gray.
So we'll just stick with that, one, two, three.
And thank you.
Sharon's not here, Sharon was the one, yeah.
Back to where you started, basically, and appreciate you doing that, give it, you know, give us an opportunity to look at some different things, so I guess we'll send you a zoning certificate in the morning, Elizabeth will, and you'll be good to paint, and paint over the other big sections.
Jim, do we need to do that motion first for that?
Yep.
Great. So any other comment on the zoning certificate? I get a motion then for approval of a zoning certificate, Hampstead Grain Mill, 4041 Gill Avenue?
So moved.
A second?
Seconded.
Okay, so moved, thank you. Next up is approval of simplified site plan, the Hampstead Grain Mill, 4041 Gill Avenue.
Okay, so the site plan is very similar to what might even actually be exactly the same site plan that we reviewed when we discussed the parking layout.
Which is at the back of your packets.
We're just revisiting it now, because the county came back and said it could be a simplified site plan, which doesn't really require, didn't require any changes.
So with the county's approval of the simplified site plan, we just got this, I think, last week or late the week before, when we got the approval letter, reading it, they noted, you know, they, all agencies approved the plan, and those agencies were fire safety, they were permitting, there were development review, and there was a couple others. But Development Review had to note that, note that the proposed limits of disturbance extends from the subject property onto two adjoining properties under separate ownership. The Bureau of Development Review recommends the town request letters of acknowledgement from these, from those property owners. And I agree that we do need to get just an acknowledgement that, you know, they are aware of the project, and they are aware that the level of disturbance does cross onto their property, and that they have no issue with the project.
Okay.
So.
And one of the properties.
Yeah, so he, they own the one, and the other is two brothers, the Corniest Brothers, that own the corner lot at Gill and Main. So if you can get some sort of documentation from them.
I think the only disturbance is we're coming off of the BG&E pole, and then we're upgrading electrical service in the building, so I think it overlaps, the pole location, I think overlaps maybe six inches onto their property, so we run that conduit across. It's like, it's a very minor disturbance from what I remember.
Okay. Do you all have questions about the project?
I think we've talked about this one quite a bit, I have not, yeah.
So the only disturbance, and this is per the county, is saying that it's that light pole, it's the BG&E pole?
They didn't really go into specifications, and, and looking at this, it, it's hard to tell exactly what the disturbance will be on the property.
From what I recall, if that helps, do you want me to come up and point?
I mean, I would think that if they're saying that the proposed limits of disturbance extends onto two adjoining properties, then they would have to tell you what it would be.
Well, it also looks like there's proposed paving that you're putting in there, too.
Well, that's on my property. The light pole, so that's, I believe that's the BG&E. The BG&E pole's like right in here, so the conduit overlaps just a little bit. I don't even know if that really showed it. Just that we have to do a little piece of conduit, and there's actually already conduit there, but we have to increase the size of the wiring that goes from that pole into the building.
So you're moving the pole basically onto the utility easement in the backyard of the other property, is that what you're doing?
I think we're just really upgrading the size of the wiring.
Looking at it now, it says relocated light pole.
Unless they have it relocated on my property, maybe that's what they're doing. I thought it was really the conduit that they were worried about, but maybe that comment came through. So it might be as easy, I can double check it, might be as easy as really just telling them we're taking the light pole off of their property and sticking it a few inches over onto errors.
There's not enough room to do that.
What's that?
There's not enough room to move it closer to the building, is that what you're saying? There's no way it would go-
Yeah, it's moving from his property there to there, right?
The opposite direction.
Yeah. I think it's like right on the, it's hard to really tell the line, but it's like right on the, oh, you know what, that's not the light pole, I'm sorry. That's not the telephone pole, I'm sorry. This is a lamppost light that's behind the barn. That is, that's, that one's on my property. The, um...
Okay, yes, I see it says relocated, so it's, I'm assuming it's already been relocated? Or it is not?
It's not right now. We wanted to push it.
It says TBR there, Jim, under-
Yes, I got it, got it.
A little bit.
To be relocated.
I think it's right, this is where, I think it's this thing here, I just can't read it too well.
Propose underground electric?
Yeah.
We don't have a bigger copy of this anywhere?
We do, we have an electronic copy.
No paper?
I actually got one back here and I was trying to figure it out earlier.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'll get it back.
So if you guys want to slide it down, if you want to move your water.
I don't understand why the county would talk about the limits of disturbance but not specify what they are.
That's the property line and that's the pole.
And the pole's already there.
And then our conduit is right here. So it's-
Oh, I see, okay, see, yeah.
So there's a current electrical conduit, but we have to make it a little bit larger to supply the upgrade of power. And that pole, like if you follow that dotted line, it is like literally just inches between the property line.
And what would be the other one on the other side then? Because it's both?
Well, this one is, this is my property here.
Right.
So anything that's on here is already-
He isn't going to get permission from him, so.
No, I understand that. I'm just trying to figure out what the county was talking about with the disturbances besides that.
Because the quarter, basically, it doesn't go right over that corner.
It's just this little tiny, it's within-
Yeah, okay.
It's less, it was inches from what the surveyor said.
So it's not a light pole, it's a conduit?
No, it's a conduit that already exists, it's just going to get larger and then buried back in.
Okay.
So it won't even visually have any approach. And then we were just moving this light pole back because if you're on the property, it's like really close to this corner and it just, it doesn't make sense to, I think it's been backed into before by other vehicles.
Okay, the small one, that's what I thought you were talking about until I saw the big picture.
So I just, and actually BG&E, it's their pole and they set it, but they will move it a little further back and then that way we don't have to worry about vehicles running it back over. I think Wayne said he had it fixed before, or there's been a couple of times they've been fixed. I know there's one here, I think there's another one somewhere in here.
So maybe when the other property owners approach, this can be kind of simplified a little bit so they can focus in on more exactly how they're affected but not affected and what you give to them when you explain it to them.
I'm sorry?
You have to get in touch with the other property owner, right, to share with them? But I'm saying we might want to simplify this more so that it's clear, because we had a hard time kind of wrapping our heads around it, so when you go to them, you want to make sure they truly understand it.
Honestly, and I apologize, I'm off my game today because my head's just killing me, but I think this explains it, how it does cross this line and go into his property. So, I mean, but honestly, because it is going into his property, he does need to acknowledge that he is aware and he has no issues of it.
Yeah, I would be huffing upset if somebody did something on my property and I didn't have a chance to fully understand it first.
And the difference too is, and I would point out, this is something that already exists.
Yeah.
You're just, you know, increasing it, which would have no, they wouldn't even notice, so.
Yeah, if they didn't come by while it was happening, I'm sure they wouldn't have noticed. At the end result, it'll look the same.
Exactly. So I would just put that in the letter and ask them to acknowledge it when it's done.
I actually forgot it, I just looked it back at you earlier and I forgot what the impact was.
Anybody else have any questions about the site plan?
All good? Okay, so then looking for a motion for this, for approval, right?
Can we make a motion with the, I mean, with the, whatever, my head's doing the same thing yours is doing, based on the recommending, you know?
Contingent that.
Contingent is the word I was looking for.
Okay, so let me try this on then, right. So can we get an approval of the simplified site plan, Hampstead Grain Mill, 4041 Gill Avenue, with a contingent notification of the owners of the adjacent property that are going to be impacted by the conduit?
Limited disturbance, yes.
Limited disturbance.
Perfect. Good job, so moved.
Did I get a second?
Seconded.
Okay. So approve with that contingent.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. So, get us that letter?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the introduction of the concept site plan, Tractor Supply Company, Hanover Pike, map 0500 parcel 3193. Just go ahead and introduce yourself and-
Hey, my name's Eddie Mueller, I'm an engineer with BL Company, designed 12003, 645 in Charlotte and Charlotte County. I here introducing our Tractor Supply Company store located at Hanover Pike near East Rose, the 21,000 square foot retail building with some additional outdoor display areas. Tractor Supply sells a variety of lawn and garden supplies, equipment, pet supply and the like, so, before the comments, your thoughts?
My first thought, I'd be a hypocrite if I didn't, I mean, I love Tractor Supply. I never thought I'd actually have a Tractor Supply literally within walking distance of my house, which could be a good thing or a bad thing, but I guess this doesn't really affect you, but the first thing that comes to mind is our local small businesses, we have the mill and we have True Value, and both of those local small businesses would be greatly impacted by the addition of this, so we might be already past that point. And I just felt the need to say that, I mean, it's, the mill is the town of Hampstead's go-to place for, you guys provide everything they do and more, and that's, I don't know. But I just wanted to acknowledge that doesn't mean that I wouldn't be stepping foot in the Tractor Supply, but as a concern, I hate to see the small businesses not be able to make it because big business moves in.
And this is where?
In between the daycare-
This is where the grocery stores?
Oh, right next to Green Mount?
Yes, just past Green Mount, just past the daycare.
Oh.
That empty field.
When I drive past that field, there were some cones in there, is that the layout of where that building is going to possibly-
No, they put in geotechnical-
Okay, okay.
Yeah, what happened to the bog turtle? Wasn't that one of the bog turtle, um?
No, it's on the other side.
It's only on the other side?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's like an area, like, yay big, right?
Okay, for some reason I thought it was-
Have you ever heard of the bog turtle?
I have.
Okay.
I've worked up this way for many years and I'm very familiar with it.
Your heart stopped for a minute when I said we have the bog turtle.
One I was just going to mention, it is up, it is kind of jutting up next to a daycare facility, right? And I would just want to make sure that anything that goes into that parking lot potentially there, that there would be some type outside of just the landscaping, which it looks like even on this preliminary plan, there's plenty of landscaping that's going to be there, but there would be some fencing or something just to prevent anybody from parking in there, walking to the backside of that daycare, a kid from the daycare kind of going over, all of those things that might, you know, nine times out of 10 are never going to happen, but, you know, I think just the consideration that it is next to a very successful, very good daycare right there and just to protect those kids right there and knowing that it's going to be a business.
Is there an empty lot between the two?
There's a small sliver of lot.
There's a driveway going back to that farmhouse in the back, right?
And there's an empty lot, a small one between the two.
How would you define small?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
Fifty feet, 20 feet, I'll be honest with you, I can't, I need to get new glasses, I can't really.
And then the other question I had was, and this came up with the Washex stuff, was obviously, what's the traffic impact coming out of the Tractor Supply, people turning into that? I mean, knowing that, I live right around the corner as well, trying to just leave Farmwoods Lane to get onto 30 sometimes can be a challenge now that they actually just took down those trees on that, that house on the corner.
It can actually-
It's a little easy, you can see. But knowing sometimes that that backs up, that it is kind of hilly, that I've seen, you know, people cut out from there pretty quickly. Same thing in that spot, kind of where that's entering and going, you know, what's the traffic there, going, people going to and from. Green Mount Station, there's a lot of, there's always, you know, people trying to turn in and out of there and I'm just worried about accidents. I know the speed limit there is 30 or 35.
Forty to 30 at that transition spot.
I'm going to jump on that too because that's actually what I was going to say, but the reality is, that is the last stretch of the northern part of Hampstead where people don't really acknowledge that they're supposed to be slowing down. And I would say the average speed going through there is probably 50 miles an hour when traffic allows and now with the bypass, of course, do, people are able to maintain that speed more. But the point that you do add, another business there that's in and out, he's absolutely right, coming out of the bowling alley at Green Mount, if it's like peak times?
Right.
It's kind of taking your life in your hands unless you make sure you look, once, look twice and look five more times to make sure nobody's flying over that little, there's a little hill there in that area. So I would, you guys encourage a traffic study for the-
Absolutely, that's, that's the way they will, you know, do it, is engineering, I don't think it's given their, their comments yet, engineering, I'm pretty sure will require a traffic study.
Yeah, it really needs to, after all, we were told 20 some years ago that there's going to be a traffic light at Farmwoods Lane, but that never happened, but that would have slowed down traffic, so.
That was before me.
Oh, no, it wasn't the town, it was the guy that sold us our house.
Oh.
The only other thing I would add was, and I don't, again, I know this is preliminary, but I don't see it on here, and I know you can only control the property that this building would be sitting on, but sidewalk space on that side, that's like the one stretch of land right there, and adding a building like that, and right now, a lot of people, a lot of runners, bikers use, there's, is that the start of where that turning lane is up there? Or is it, does the turning lane start?
You can't safely walk in that.
More north, correct? Yeah, the turning lane kind of starts where the rehab facility places, yeah, okay. So that's what I would say is I know, and they're wide medians right now, but knowing what I've seen people do when people are trying to turn into Green Mount Station, they, you know, they cut around, they, you know, try to get around those cars pretty quickly because they don't want to stop, they're not going the speed limit. It would be nice to have a sidewalk in that plan right there.
If they'll find this, they can, so we'll incorporate that.
Okay.
Typically, I could be wrong, but I think sometimes with projects like this, there are some requirements that you do some sort of improvements to the adjacent, so that would be a perfect addition, okay?
And I can let you know, we discussed this, that any truck traffic, as in delivery trucks or anything, they'll be coming in the north entrance, the one close to the Farmwoods, and so we've already discussed the fact that as they come out of there, they will be required to head north on 30 to the north circle so they don't come down and get onto Main Street. So we're requiring that of all new big trucks, like across the street, where we have the North Carroll Business Park, same deal. They need to exit and head north, they cannot come down to Main Street.
Can you refresh my memory, other than just not wanting a lot of heavy truck traffic, traffic coming through town, was, what was the issue with the trucks, something with weight or something with the road and?
Well, just the heavier the trucks and the more truck traffic you have, the, it's more detrimental to your roads.
More wear and tear.
Yeah, more wear and tear.
Okay, so it was just, okay.
Oh, yeah, we have that brand new road.
Because I thought there was something with like the little leaks, like they couldn't have the fire trucks in the parade or something like that, there was some?
No, no, that was on a different road, that was back on Willow, where the weight of those trucks, there was a significant area back there where the weight of those trucks, and there's a tiny bridge, that was the issue back there, not Main Street.
Okay, so I'm mixing two different things.
Yep.
So basically, it's just maintaining the integrity of the town street as long as possible without, okay. Yeah, yeah.
So what's the, the timing for all of this, just rough, you know, fall, winter, spring, summer, or what year?
The next five, six, nine months as soon as we get to the county, the county and the town process. We'll see that.
And the old water question? The water's already there and they can upgrade into the town water?
Yeah, we, we have a capacity management plan that we do with the town that shows basically our existing uses. We show what we can produce and then we have our existing uses and then we have projects in the pipeline and including TSC and we're fine. And TSC is not going to be a large water user, so.
I am, I'll be completely honest, I really can't see these with the clusters I have on tonight, but in terms of the back, I mean, there are, there's a neighborhood there, there's houses, they're mighty close on the other side of the, will there be some sort of landscaping wall screen in the back?
Yeah, landscaping screen along the rail road to-
But something significant, so if those people that have their house there, they're not going to be sitting there looking at the Tractor Supply dumpster, whatever, that's... How, how many parking spots roughly?
I think we're slated for about 86 right now.
Eighty-six or eighty-eight, it's right on the front, it's on one of these sheets.
And I think there was already, when I was driving here tonight, I looked, and that's when I noticed those traffic cones, there is already a lot of evergreen trees, I don't know if they're on this side of the railroad tracks or on the other side of the railroad tracks, but, but I think any addition to that would be a plus for those townhouses and stuff back in North Carroll Farms.
I believe we're proposing to provide the minimum parking required by code, so.
Yep, and it is 88, they're required to do 88, they're doing 88, we require four ADA handicap spots and they're doing four. One thing that did catch my eye is, so the minimum parking dimensions are nine feet by 18 feet, and so they're actually doing 10 by 18, which I like, thank you.
Especially with all the pickup trucks and-
Exactly.
Might be premature, but like lighting ideas, any idea of how the parking lot will be?
It'll be standard, simple lighting, the plan does not have any light to leave the property, so.
Okay.
It's pretty standard, we're working on that plan now, so.
Yeah, because it is, although Hampstead's kind of growing and expanding and business parts are growing, that is still kind of a darker area of Hampstead, it's once you get out of the main part of town, so.
Okay. Any more comments?
So what will happen is they'll receive comments, we'll talk occasionally, you know, see any questions, give, you know, our input, and then our next step in this process will be a public hearing. I'm not sure if it'll be next month or the following month, but we'll see how basically the plan moves along when we think it's appropriate to have the public hearing.
One last question, sorry. The house that you had referenced, do they need to be notified? I mean, they're almost like right on top of the project, or is that just late for them to find out, or?
Normally, they're not notified in a process like this. Adjoining neighbors are not notified on the site plan process. When this, when the public hearing comes up, we do post the address, you'll have the sign out there and everything, so.
Okay? Great, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks.
Next, Carroll County Department of Planning update, Andrew.
I'm late, fell asleep, I can do it right here.
Go for it.
Now, we click you at the podium.
Do you want the mic?
For housing study, a housing consultant came to Hampstead Day and got a lot of good feedback from the residents of Hampstead and Manchester. More information on the housing study can be found on the county website. Jim, I can provide that to you for the commission, and besides that, that is all I have.
That was worth standing up for.
I think it's the shortest update I've gotten from you, Jim, Andrew. Okay, great. Any other business?
The only other thing, are we good with the June 18th? Everybody on board with that?
Well, it moved a couple times, 18th is what day is it?
It's the Tuesday.
Let me just double check one more time.
Yes, June 18th.
The 18th.
Yes.
I think I replied to the positive.
Yeah, I think everybody pretty much did.
Yeah, I already moved to that, okay, 18th is good.
That was the Wayne Sharp meeting.
It's the what?
The Wayne Sharp meeting.
Ooh, yeah.
You have to go back into the email stuff.
All right, thank you.
Yep, okay, public comment? Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Tackled.
Second the motion. So moved, meeting closed. Thank you, everyone.